We are streaming. We're streaming.
Just let me know when you have it ready.
Lawrence, are we good to go?
Yes, can you hear me? We're good to go. Can you hear me, Deanna?
Lawrence, are we good to go?
Yes, let me, um, yes, we're good to go. Can you hear me? Let me check. Yes, we're good to go, Deanna.
Lawrence, are we good to go?
Yes, we are good. Yeah, hold on a second.
This is the treasurer, thank you.
Can you hear me, Deanna?
All right, so Chairman, we're ready to go.
Very good. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this April 16th, 2020 emergency meeting of the North Carolina State Board of Education. I'm Eric Davis, Chair of the Board, and I call this meeting to order. I'd like to extend a special welcome in return to our treasurer. We're delighted to have you back with us. I now ask Dr. Townsend Smith to call the role to determine the quorum of the board participating, and note tall listening that a quorum is seven members. Dr. Townsend Smith?
Yes, sir. Dr. Oxendine?
Here.
Ms. Camnetts?
Here.
Mr. Keenan?
Here.
Mr. Hall?
Here.
Dr. Tipton Rogers? Ms. White?
Here.
Mr. Ford?
Present.
Treasurer Falwell? Treasurer Falwell?
Present.
Thank you. Lieutenant Governor?
Here.
Vice Chair Duncan?
Here.
Chair Davis?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I now ask for a motion to approve the April 16th, 2020 agenda. There are a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Camnetts?
Yes.
Motion by Ms. Camnetts? Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hall. Dr. Townsend Smith?
Yes, sir. Dr. Oxendine?
Yes.
Ms. Camnetts?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Dr. Tipton Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms- Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Treasurer Falwell?
Yes.
Lieutenant Governor?
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Chair Duncan?
Yes.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
A motion carries. We have an agenda. Board members are reminded that it's our duty to avoid conflicts of interest and the appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of this board. Any member of the board know of any conflict of interest or any appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before us at this meeting. If so, please state them for the record, and if during the course of the meeting you become aware of an actual or apparent conflict of interest, please bring the matter to the attention of the Chair. It will then be your duty to abstain from participating in discussion on the matter and from voting on the matter. This board continues to convene emergency meetings if needed to ensure we provide the necessary and needed guidance to support our public schools, teachers, and students. It's especially important for us to maintain a frequent meeting schedule to prepare requests for necessary legislative actions before the General Assembly convenes for its next session, which is currently set to begin on April 28th. Also, as recommendations are made to amend board policy or standing practices, we will revisit these items for additional adjustment once changes are implemented in the field. We appreciate the feedback that we have and continue to receive from districts and various stakeholders, which contributes to making our policies and practices stronger and more effective as we discuss evolving challenges, overall implications, and ultimately what is in the best interest of our student. A note for the record, the board will take a roll call vote on any items requiring action on the agenda. We'll now proceed directly to our committee meetings and begin with the Educator Standards and Practice Committee, and the Chair of that committee is Dr. Oxendine.
Thank you, Chair Davis. I am Olivia Oxendine, and I chair the ESMP Committee. Joining me in that responsibility is Ms. Amy White. There is one item on the agenda for this emergency meeting, ESMP 1, the report to the General Assembly pertaining this particular component of the report pertains to adjunct career technical educator instruct- education instructors. This is going to be made possible to hire these individuals based on four conditions, and those conditions are outlined and clarified in your board material, but I would like to take this opportunity and ask Mr. Trey Michael, who is the Director of CTE, to come forward or come to the mic, I'm sorry, and- and give a bit more detail pertaining to this item. Mr. Michael?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Thank you very much, Dr. Oxendine, and good afternoon to you all. I'll be brief with our comments about this. The intent of this, and you see this in the report, is in relationship to Senate Bill 366. The State Board's mission there per that law was to develop minimum criteria of relative education and employment experience for specific professionals to enter our teaching profession at a maximum of a certain number of hours and with certain requirements that are outlined in the report, as you see there. These pieces of information there are lifted directly from the law that you see there on the first part, parts A through E. I would like to point out that there was one point of discrepancy, that the law was rewritten, and in- in our efforts to get this to you, I did need to make one change. I've made that change and have a new draft of that report ready to submit back to you. The only change is in regards to Bullet A, as you see there on the first part, under an adjunct instructor. That has been amended in Session Bill, in Senate Bill 366, to actually say 20 hours per week rather than just 10 hours per week. So we have made that change, and that is the only change of substance that we have made to this document. The rest of this document does go on to talk about some of the requirements per the law, and our team of regional coordinators did, of course, take this new opportunity and work with stakeholders to develop compensation guidelines, as you see on the bottom of the first page there, relative to years of experience. Talk a little bit about how the CTE Director is involved in hiring that person to assist local principals in that process. And then the remaining documents in this are really excerpts from our CTE fiscal policy guidelines from Appendix P, and they're really to be used for our local entities to help guide them through the decision-making process about whether someone would be eligible for this or not. And that is the extent of the report that we were asked to produce. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Michael, and to my colleagues. Are there questions pertaining to this item or comments? Let me make sure that I understand, Mr. Michael. So there is one change. I think that change is moving from 10 hours to 20 hours per week, and that is in Part A of the item. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. That's the only substantive change.
Okay, so you're asking us to approve, the board to approve this item today, understanding that that change has already taken place in- in the report. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. It will be sent to Dr. Townsend Smith as soon as we get off the call.
Very good. Thank you so much. Questions for my colleagues? If not, Chair Davis, this item, I'm presenting it to the board for voting today, and that concludes my portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Oxendine. We'll now move to the Special Committee on Digital Learning and Computer Sciences, and I'll turn to the Chair of that committee or Lieutenant Governor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This will be quick. I think we have Dr. Wren on the line with us as well to discuss a waiver that we'd like to request from the General Assembly so that the LEAs have extended time to apply for their digital learning grants, as well as needing to extend the deadline for when digital learning rubrics are to be returned to the State Board patient. So if Dr. Wren is on the line, we'll let her pull us all in.
Thank you, Lieutenant Governor. This is Vanessa Wren. Two items that we would like to bring to your attention today. The first item is the extension of the Digital Teaching Learning Initiative Grant Expenditure Date. Currently, there are 22 LEAs who are holding $750,000 approximately in funds that are scheduled to be spent by June 30th. We are requesting that that deadline be extended to December 31st to allow them to spend the mon- money the way they had outlined in their plan. This action would require legislative action for these dollars not to revert on June 30th, but to allow them an extended period to use these grant funds. The second item is a State Board action item. Each biennium, each PSU must complete the Digital Learning Progress Rubric. That is currently due on June 30th. We would like to extend that out to December 31st of 2020 in order to allow each district and charter to accurately complete the data and for us to potentially revise the tool to gather information on remote learning readiness as- as we see that this is a need to capture more information around that now. And that request would require board action. I will also say that each year, each district also submits a North Carolina Digital Learn and Media Report. That is not a policy item, but we are also extending that out to December 31st as well. And that concludes my comments on those two items.
Thank you. Dr. Wren, are there any questions or comments for Dr. Wren on this? Don't hear any, so, Mr. Chairman, that should wrap it up for us.
Thank you, Lieutenant Governor. We'll now move to the Business Operations Committee, and I'll call on the committee Chair, Vice Chairman Duncan.
Thank you, Chair Davis. On behalf of Todd Chastain, we represent the Business Operations Committee and have one item today for action on first reading and three discussion items. Our action on first reading involves the Driver Education Carryover Allowance. The current funding was enacted to provide a dedicated funding source for every year, requiring those funds to revert if unexpended or unencumbered at the end of the year. Driver says it's a program where annual expenditures are not consistent for several justifiable reasons, and as you can imagine, we have a justifiable reason on this particular year where the normal driver education programming has been interrupted. So we typically have a large number of students enrolling in the first few weeks of summers, which would then produce a wave of students to drive the rest of summer and into the fall. With the results of that, we could end up having significant reversions of the amounts this year, and then a significant, potentially a significant shortage of funds to provide these services next year. Because of that concern, what we are asking the board to approve would be that we include in our legislative request to the board at least a one-year carryover allowance for driver education funds to offset potential budgetary shortfalls for next year's budget. As a larger policy matter, we think that this would be a good thing for all years, but at a minimum, we actually think it's very important for this particular year in order to service the students' needs and as those needs have been altered because of the circumstances. Carl Logan is here to speak to this further. Carl, would you like to add anything on this particular request?
Um, yeah, actually, it's pretty self-explanatory there, but yes, we, if we do have a shortfall in the budget next year, it could cause us to have another shutdown at this time of the year next year. That's what we're trying to avoid first.
Thank you. And some of us recall, happened before, you then quickly learned who all your friends were. They had 15 and 16-year-old children. They were able to find you pretty quickly.
Yes.
So are there any questions or comments on this request, in terms of our legislative agenda, request of variations in light of the pandemic issues that are raised? Not hearing any. Let me do our first of our three discussion items, which is North Carolina Governor's School. As we have reported in the last couple of meetings, we're very carefully monitoring this situation and have some potentially difficult decisions to make as we go ahead. We're in the process now of consulting with our higher education partners, High Point University and Meredith College, both of which have been tremendous partners for this program for a long time, and communicating fully with them in terms of what the likelihood is of being able to go forward. We also obviously want to include the- the students who potentially would be attending Governor's School this year on these issues as well. So that process is progressing. We haven't, there's not an absolute final decision that's been made, but it's obviously dealing with some difficult issues, and we have to be very cognizant and sensitive to the needs of our partner institutions as well. So as we work through that process, I raise it again to continue to inform the board that work is going on and to say that we may have to make some decision at some point in the not-too-distant future about where we are with respect to this year's North Carolina Governor's School. Are there any questions about that? All right, not hearing any. Let's go on to Biz Op, item number three, discussion of the CARES Act Emergency Relief Fund, ERC 163. This is the very significant funding that has been passed by Congress that would distribute approximately $390 million for use by North Carolina LEAs. These funds can be used for a number of activities, but they align strongly with the types of uses that would be permitted for Title I kinds of funds. There's a minimum of 90% of the funds must be allocated to the LEAs. The North Carolina DPA can reserve up to half of 1% for administration purposes. The State, the State Board and the DPA can reserve up to 10%, but it would need to be, obviously, for specifically identified needs that would project to help the state as a whole from the state level. But a minimum of 90% would have to be distributed. The need here would be, or the purpose here would be to make distributions that would be done in a way that's reasonably consistent with the Title I kind of distribution that has been made pass. That is a federal kind of funding review look, as opposed to a state decision in terms of how the funding divisions are made. Some of the other, it's also shared in some part by charter schools. There are some exceptions to that, and I'm going to have Alexis Schaus explain those to us in a moment. And Catherine Johnson is also on the line to help us through these discussions, as I understand it. So thank you to both of you for being here. We need to, obviously, award the funds consistent with the guidelines that we receive. In your materials, you will see there are a number of proposed guidelines that may still be filled out further, but they're found in your materials, and they set out things such as, as I said, the Title I, the traditional Title I need, developing and implementing procedures and systems to improve preparedness and response efforts to the coronavirus, training and professional development for staff, and minimizing spread of infectious diseases, and helping with sanitation needs, purchasing sanitation equipment, purchasing educational technology, providing mental health services, planning and implementing summer learning and supplemental after-school program activities, including providing classroom instruction or online learning during the summer month. There is some provision where some assistance could be given in terms of assisting with meals or nutritional needs of students. So there's a, there's a list of needs that fall within the apparent guidelines that we as a state already recognize we have. These funds become very important, I think, to the LEAs and to the state as a whole as we move forward. With that background, Alexis or Catherine, can I turn to you to fill in the board further in terms of- of the usage of these funds, how the timing of when they might be received, and those kinds of important questions that would naturally arise?
Certainly. This is Alexis Schaus. So, yes, you do have in your materials three documents. One is a summary of the Education Stabilization Fund Grants that are in, they cover three areas, one of which is the policy that is being discussed right now, relates to K-12 Emergency Relief Fund, and then there is the Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund, and then an IHG one. So that will provide you a pretty good summary as to how the calculations come about, because I'm, we're getting questions related to that. There is also the proposed policy that is being discussed that Mr. Duncan has gone through most of the items there. And then, thirdly, there is a estimate of the planning allotment by unit, and when you look through that, you will see that there is a low and a high amount for each unit, and all LEAs, all public school units actually are eligible. That's LEAs, charters, lab schools, regional schools, and the ISD. But because the legislation allocates out the funds based on the proportion of the Title I funds that the unit received in the most recent year, some charter schools, and depending on which year, is defined by the federal government as the most recent year, some charter schools and maybe a lab school will be excluded from the calculation because they did not receive funds. So some charter schools, and I think when you look through it, there's about 24 of them, did not receive any of the Emergency Relief Fund because they did not receive Title I funds. Some charter schools choose not to apply for Title I funds. Maybe the funds are just too small for them to do the administration of it, or for some other reasons. Also, if the most recent year is determined to be the 2018-19 year, then the new charter schools that are in effect this year would not receive funding. The planning allotments that you see here is actually based on the assumption that the most recent year is the 2019-20 year. So you will see those new schools are actually included. We also, by federal law, are required to recalculate federal grants for growing charter schools, and this would not have that impact. So if you had a charter school that was growing, you know, doubling in size each year, which some of the new ones do, there wouldn't be an adjustment for that. So they would get a smaller percentage. And then there are residential schools that would not be included. So with all that, that low and high ranges are taking consideration the determination of the recent year, as well as the amount of reservation that is taken, as well as kind of what guidance we will receive as to how to accommodate these other units that will clearly be incurring costs related to COVID-19, even if they did not receive Title I funds. So that is that document, and with, related to timing, we are hoping that these will be expedited much faster than regular federal grants. And we did receive notice from the Department of Education that the Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund money, which is separate from this, it's about $96 million for education education agencies or the IHGs, depending on the Governor's determination. But those funds are available to be applied for, and the statement was that once those application was, once the application was received from the state, that they would obligate the funds within three days. So that gives us hope that these 390 million will be available within the next week or two for us to apply for, and then the school districts will have to apply for those funds. So all that would take place, hopefully, in a very streamlined fashion. Is there, are there other areas that you would like me to discuss related to this?
I think there's very helpful some questions on this, so let me open the floor to let the questions be asked.
Mr. Duncan, this is Olivia. Can you hear me?
Yes, Dr. Oxendine.
Thank you very much, and thank you for that report, Alexis. I can, I'm having difficulty seeing the attachment, but I, I do want to go, I have a couple of questions about the Governor's Relief Fund, and my question is-
That's actually our next item.
Okay, because my-
They have now gotten sort of matched together.
Okay, because I do have questions about the process that we, the State Board will use, or if we are going to be, have an opportunity to make a budget request. So I'll listen. I'll wait and listen and learn.
Well, why don't I go ahead and cover that, since it's hard to talk about them both separate? Why don't I cover at least the generalities of it? Alexis already had some comments and may have others, but that way, then we'll come right back to you, Dr. Oxendine, and get your question. How about that?
That's perfect. Thank you.
So our Biz Op 4 item is the Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund, which is, got, which Alexis has already described the timing of in terms of when the money would be received or distributed. The funding formula is 60% based on relative total population and 40% based on relative Title I student population. As a result of that, North Carolina will receive approximately $95 million out of that fund. The Governor would be allowed to make subgrants for the following areas that I think are germane to us. One is provide emergency support through grants to local educational agencies that the state educational agency deems to have been most significantly impacted by coronavirus to support the ability of such local educational agencies to continue to provide educational services to their students and support the ongoing functionality of the local educational agency. So one way of thinking of that is our most heavily impacted agencies by way of the financial ramifications that are occurring would certainly be under consideration. The other two that could have some application, given that we have a number of students in joint programs relate to grants to institutions of higher education serving students within the state that the Governor determines have been most significantly impacted by coronavirus to support the ability of those institutions to continue to provide educational services and to support, again, the ongoing functionality of the institution. And the last area that would potentially have any impact would be to provide support to any other institutions of higher education, local education agency, or education-related entity within the state that the Governor deems essential for carrying out emergency educational services to students for authorized activities described within the Act, and the provision of childcare and early childhood education, social and emotional support, and the protection of education-related jobs. So, again, those are, those are all items that potentially, we certainly are seeing an impact from in our state, and potentially then could be under consideration for the Governor's Emergency Relief Fund. Alexis, do you want to add to that, and then we'll turn to Dr. Oxendine? Alexis, do you want to add to that, and then we'll turn to Dr. Oxendine?
No, I believe that is, that's it in totality, and that is actually included in the summary that's provided in your materials.
Dr. Oxendine.
Yes, thank you. My question then has to do with, I'm curious about another stream of money, if this is a possible stream that the State Board of Education can tap into, and it's, any kind of need for monies in, in, in request to the Assembly? Are we going to have that opportunity to put it? For instance, I'm thinking about summer school remediation and/or enrichment. Are we going to be developing a proposal for OMB to send on over to the General Assembly and do that right away?
Well, I must say, I don't know, I don't have a full sense of development about how those determinations would be made. The way it reads references the governor's judgment under the Act, but I don't know what the process would be after the governor makes determinations or what process might be filed. Alexis, can you help us with that? I'd not see more in the Act that's helpful on that, but there may be procedures we should be aware of.
Well, yes, I think we should because I, we've talked extensively about if, if our, if we even have buildings open in the summer, we've talked extensively about the need for summer school startup restart opportunities. And I'm hearing, actually, I'm hearing this from the field in my, my district, the, from a couple of educators about, they're hearing something about a, I don't know, summer bridge program that must have some promise or is being discussed. Is that something that the State Board is going to pursue? I suppose is my question.
Yeah, I think, I think the, the specific question is who would have the ultimate direction in these funds? And the way the Act reads it would be the governor would be making the selections of how to use these resources. Obviously, our needs are far greater than the resources, so there's going to have to be some prioritization taken. So I, I think, I'd have to say from what I can see of it at this point, that it can be done quickly, but the grants, the grant applications will need to be made and then judgments made about which grant applications will ultimately receive the awards, is the way the Act reads.
I just think we have lots of opportu, it seems like we're going to have multiple opportunities to get our students ready for school in the fall academically, and summer school is very important to me, not to exhaust the point, but you, all of you recall my extensive conversations about K-3 reading the last couple of weeks, and summer is going to be so important. So if there's something called a summer bridge program or any other funds that can prepare our kids to be emotionally and socially robust and ready to go, if the General Assembly is going to provide that opportunity, let's go after it as a State Board.
Right. I think we are all very much, very much in alignment with your thoughts about that.
Mr. Duncan, this is Superintendent Johnson.
I can't. Please, go ahead, Superintendent.
Just to add a little bit of transparency here, the State Board sent a proposal last night to the Office of State Budget Management specifically requesting over $250 million in expenses, and something like this was one of those requests. So that request has been made by the State Board of Education.
All right. The...
I mean, is that, is that something that is going to be, is that going to be presented to the public?
I think there, I think in due course, all things will be presented to the public. Obviously, right now, I think we're asking the questions about this Governor's Fund, and I think with respect to that fund, I think what Dr. Oxendine has identified has been supported by the Board first, and second, would appear to be under the, would be, appear to be covered by the terms of this particular Act, but the, the, it's not indicated, for example, that the State Board would be the selector of the grant recipient. It, the way the Act reads it would suggest that the Governor's Office would be.
Right. I understand that. Let me, let me kind of separate the difference between the two things that I think there's a lot of confusion at the department right now about. This is the CARES Act, which is going to be almost $400 million that will be sent out to the districts, and then also a separate fund of 90-something million dollars that the governor will decide how to send out. I'm talking about the State Board proposal that went to the Office of State Budget Management last night. It was about $250 million worth of request, but was lacking in certain items like funding for our EC student population. And I think there's now a lot of confusion around the department on who is calling the shot, on what, who, what the State Board is actually requesting from the State Budget Office and the General Assembly.
Yeah, Mr. Duncan, I can assist you on that. The particular item Superintendent's bringing up is not on our agenda today. What is on our agenda is these two items concerning federal funding for the CARES Act, and the item he's describing will be put on a future Board meeting agenda.
But you've al, you've already requested it on behalf of the State Board.
And it will be discussed at a future Board meeting.
All right. If you'll allow me a moment, I've been a frequent critic of the lack of transparency from State Board leadership and the State Board Office, and I've worked with two chairmen in my time as Superintendent, and I've had many disagreements with folks. But what I can say about Chairman Bill Kobe is that he, at the end of the day, acknowledged that he was one vote amongst many peers, and that it was the State Board of Education to make these decisions. And just this year, Mr. Davis, we have seen that you single-handedly signed a contract that violated state procurement laws, competitive bidding, State Board policy, you didn't tell DPI about it, you didn't tell the State Board about it, and it bundled tens of thousands of dollars to one of JV Buck's clients. Then we see last week that you came up with a funding formula for emergency management funds that completely cut out Mecklenburg County and gave money to every single other county except Mecklenburg, and State Board members didn't even know that. And now I get notification that there's been a State Board of Education request made to the Office of State Budget Management, which is putting together the budget request for this disaster relief. It's for 250-something million dollars. We don't know everything that's in there, but on reviewing it, high level, I can tell you one glaring thing that's missing is funding for our EC student population. And so I would just encourage the State Board leadership and State Board Office to act with transparency and to involve the State Board in these decisions.
All right. Thank you for those comments.
Yep. Thank you, Superintendent Johnson, for that comment. We'll return to our agenda. Mr. Duncan?
Are there any, are there any other questions on these two items?
Mr. Duncan, this is Mr. Ford. I just have a clarifying question. With regard to the Governor's Relief Fund, with consideration, I heard some of the language about the impact of the coronavirus, and this may be something that has to be distilled or defined later, but how do you imagine the impact would be measured? Are we talking about just purely numerically, the number of cases? Are we talking about the impact of, or rather, the ability of an LEA to respond to the impact or the effects of coronavirus versus their, you know, financial ability? Do you have any clarity around what that, what that means when we talk about impact?
Well, some of the language of the, of the Governor's portion of the 90 million-plus distribution appeared to look at the amount of economic damage that may have been done to the financial viability of an agency and the ability to try to provide some assistance in repairing that. There does seem to be language that would talk to that. I don't see any language that talks to the number of cases in a county or the number of deaths in a county. It appears to be more focused on the educational impact and the impact on the providers, the institutions and/or LEAs that are providing that education. Obviously, that can be affected by issues of the number of cases in an area, but that's, it's not, there does not appear to be any kind of numerical direction or guidance with respect to cases in a particular county or the number of cases or deaths that so tragically have occurred. I don't see that in any of the guides, at least that we have today, Mr. Ford, if that's helpful.
Yes, that is, and, and as I figured, I mean, some of these things I imagine wouldn't be nailed down just yet. And if I could take liberty just to offer a comment, sort of piggyback off of Dr. Oxendine said, with all the monies, both from the CARES Act and from the Governor's Relief Fund, I, I want us to begin to think about just how drastically, how creative and innovative we're going to have to be to close some of the opportunity gaps that have been exacerbated by this tragedy, you know, while it's, you know, preferable and I think ideal to return to a sense of quote-unquote normalcy. It's very possible that we may never achieve that, right? And so I want us to begin, even now, to start thinking about the numerous ways we're going to have to enact interventions to fulfill our constitutional obligation by design of basic education, and that's a bit of a, bit of a soapbox statement there, but I just wanted to make sure we introduced that, that line of thinking even now as we head into and prepare for how to mitigate the effects on learning for our students.
Yeah. Point very well taken, very well made. Thank you for that. Any other questions or comments?
This is Amy White.
Yes.
Could you clarify for me, again, I just did not hear it in the discussion, with particular relationship to the Governor's Relief Fund, where charters fit in and ask for that particular fund?
Let me ask if Alexis can give us some guidance on that. That's a very good question. Thank you for it, Ms. White.
Related to the Governor's Fund, this, that all will be determined based on the governor, what, where he determines that those grants are the... It's, I think, as Mr. Duncan kind of pointed out, there is a lot of, you know, there are three different guiding principles for whether he can present those funds, and within that, it will be kind of under his discretion.
Okay. Thank you for that response. Mr. Chair, may I follow with that?
Please.
Another question?
Yes, please do.
Thank you. Just a comment and question in regard to the $215 million ask that was made. I did not receive a copy of that. How might I see the items that were, that were sent over to the Office of State Budget so that I could also take a look? I didn't realize that we had sent something.
I, I'm sure that we can distribute whatever was sent to Board members, and we'll do that.
Why wasn't it sent without Board members knowing about it? That's lost weight. That's insane.
I, I'm not, I'm not sure I heard that or who that was.
I'm not sure who, Mr. Duncan, this is Olivia. Again, I, I would also concur with Ms. White and want a copy of anything that was submitted at any point last night or whenever it was submitted.
I would as well.
Yes, very good. I think that's a request...
This is Dan, and I think it's probably unanimous from everybody, but I'm, I'm equally out of the loop here, so anything you can send my way would be great. Thank you.
Yes, be glad to send it to everybody.
And Mr. Duncan, Mr. Duncan, this is Dr. Townsend Smith. You had asked who the other speaker was. I had, I had muted them because it wasn't a, a Board member, and since we're not a public forum board, I just muted that individual.
Okay. Thank God. Didn't want to ignore somebody who had a question or comment, but I couldn't quite tell or hear it.
Mr. Duncan, this is Olivia's last comment. I, I've also heard from a couple of parents in my district, and I know we need to add this somewhere to our list of things to do or think about, about kids who have respiratory problems such as asthma, and the reluctance or hesitancy on the part of their parents to send them back into school buildings. So the, the idea that has come forward, has been presented to me, is something like, could we have some policy in play such that when, when we do return to buildings, that these students could, based on some kind of policy that we develop, could continue with online remote learning? That's a very import, that's a very important issue and a very realistic one.
I had not heard that concern expressed in that way at that point, and obviously, that's something forward-thinking right now, that's something that we can certainly work with the, the local LEAs and look at, at the potential needs and certainly evaluate what would be the best way to try to deal with those concerns and assess those concerns as we go forward.
And I know that this board is all, places at a premium, the importance, and we do, we operate fully in, in transparency, and I just know that we're going to continue doing that, and for that reason, it'll, it, it will just be good if we can get information based on any kind of budget request that was sent over to the General Assembly or the OFRO would be. And then I am going to move away from this platform for a while. Thank you.
All right. Well, great. And again, as I said, that will be distributed. All right. Any other questions on these two acts which will provide significant and important additional funding relief for the, and the issues that are being dealt with by our LEAs and by the institutions of our state? If not, that concludes our report, Mr. Chair, the BizOP Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan, and that concludes our committee reports. Board members will now vote on any item requiring action from your committee reports. At this time, I ask if there's a request to remove any item from the action or action on first reading agendas. Hearing none, a request and motion to approve the following, ES and P1 as amended by Mr. Michael in his presentation, DGTL1, and BizOP 1 and 2, there are motion to approve those items.
Chair Davis, before you accept that motion, it should be just BizOP.
BizOP 1, yeah. Excuse me. Yeah. Okay. Thank you for that correction. Just BizOP 1.
Certainly. This is Olivia.
Motion by Dr. Oxendine. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hall. Any discussion on the motion?
Hearing none. Dr. Townsend Smith, we call the roll to capture the vote.
Yes, sir. Dr. Oxendine?
Yes.
Ms. Camnet?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Dr. Tipton Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Treasure Falwell?
Aye.
Thank you. Lieutenant Governor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Duncan?
Yes.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The motion carries, and now I'll turn to our Treasurer for a brief report. Welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just briefly, and people have always rolled their eyes when I've started by saying this, a famous philosopher, T.S. Eliot, once said that hell is where nothing connects, and this is not hell, this is North Carolina, so everything I'm getting ready to say to you connects back to something that's very important of the State Board of Education. Number one, just want to let you know we're working very closely with the, the Department of Public Instruction to make sure during this business interruption that we're making sure that the benefit... for those that have to pay a premium, and make sure there's no business interruption as far as that is concerned. Secondly, on the pension plan that everybody's watching the news, the stock market, ironically, five months ago, I asked for this pension plan to be stressed-tested. And Moody's, which is a rating agency that all are familiar with, came back and said that North Carolina's pension plan, that one that so many of our employees depend on, was ranked number one in the country in terms of its ability to get through an economic decline. And so the pension plan is, stock market's down, count the year-to-date, about 14%. Pension plan's down about 4%. So the conservative nature of the plan remains intact. And finally, just want to let everybody know they need to be thinking about interest rates, school system's ability to borrow money. Three weeks ago, the municipal bond market seized. And I mean that never since the word, there were no bonds being able to be issued. So we're keeping a close eye on that on behalf of our counties, and just pray for everyone who's suffering under this, either health-wise or economically. Very serious matter, especially in rural North Carolina, water and sewer rates, electricity rates, as far as our cities and counties, less collection coming in, expenses staying the same or going up. Increased expenses, less revenue, higher interest rates because the municipal market has been seized. So I tell you, I'm feeling much better than I'm sounding. I just, when I talk, it causes me to cough, but I appreciate the opportunity to share the fact that the solvency, the security of this pension plan and the health plan are intact, and we're working closely with the Department of Public Instruction to make sure that services are not interrupted. And we've also done some other things which are on our website, which is foregoing all co-payments for any type of testing for COVID-19. Thank you.
Treasurer, thank you for that report, and even more for your service to our citizens and employees across North Carolina, and we pray for your continued good health. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've, I've been coughing for quite a while, but I've been alert the whole time, so.
No doubt.
That, that's, that's my, my kids have said that's going to be part of my eulogy. He was alert the whole time.
Thank you, Treasurer.
Thank you.
I now ask for a motion to go into closed session and note for the audience and online listeners that following closed session will adjourn immediately. Vice Chairman Duncan? I move that State Board of Education go into closed session to consult with our attorneys to discuss Amplify Education, Inc. versus North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, Hope County versus Carolina and North Carolina State Board of Education, and other attorney-client privilege matters.
Motion by Mr. Duncan. Is there a second?
Second. Donna Tipton Rogers.
Second by Dr. Tipton Rogers. Dr. Townsend Smith, we call the roll to capture the vote.
Yes, sir. Dr. Oxendine?
Yes.
Ms. Camnet?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Dr. Tipton Rogers?
Yes.
Dr. Tipton Rogers?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Treasure Falwell?
Yes.
Lieutenant Governor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Duncan?
Yes.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Motion carries. We'll, thank you. We'll proceed to closed session, and I'll note for those listening that this meeting will end at the conclusion of our closed session. Thank you for attending. Dr. Townsend Smith, any instructions for us to go into close?
Yes, sir. If everyone can hold tight, much like we did yesterday, Mr. Pollard is-